I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Join me and the DPW Subcommittee and Town Council Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. in the morning. Roll call, Council Marquess is here, Joe Dow is here, Council Dow.
Here.
Council Steve.
Present.
System members, Lazo.
Here.
Spleen.
Here.
All present, thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and approve joint DPW Town Council meeting minutes on February eighth, twenty twenty-three. Any changes? Couple of spelling errors, I already caught that.
Couple.
Good, we're good? Alright, all those in favor? Yeah, thank you. Agenda item number four, Citizens Forum, would anybody like to talk about anything not on tonight's agenda? Mr. Pioppi.
I'd just like to say that, uh, I think that the DPW has an opportunity to take a look, good look at what's going on there, the structure of management, slow down, let a new director evaluate, um, what he thinks the department needs, and maybe go along with some of his recommendations before we go forward with things that we might not agree with.
Okay, that it? Alright, thank you, anybody else? No, okay, we'll move on to agenda item number five. If the town managers asked that we withdraw this motion, is there any objection to the change?
What?
Nope. I don't want to get into it.
Can we discuss?
Can we discuss?
Give me as a, as a challenge.
Ask him.
Okay, if he's asking us to withdraw.
If there's no objection.
There's a recommendation, so.
My question is, is, I still wanna discuss, talk about this, so how can we do that?
If you don't object to it.
Okay, so if we say we don't object, we can discuss that.
If you object to it, then we'll have to discuss it, I guess.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, if, if he's withdrawing it, that means he doesn't have, that means he does not currently have a person to propose, as opposed to maybe the position itself, which are you referring to?
Correct.
Are you looking for the position or the person?
The position, but, cause it's not on the agenda anymore else.
It's not on the agenda.
The only time to talk about it is during that agenda item number. I'm not saying I wanna talk about the person here, but I wanna talk about that position.
Kinda your call, Mr. Chairman.
The gentleman for that position is here.
The gentleman is here?
Is he?
I don't know.
Well, I received an email today from the town, uh, from Mr. Manager.
Yes, he is here.
I received an email today from, uh, Town Manager Blanchard that he was withdrawing this appointment, did you hear that?
I, I did not.
Did, did, did the gentleman know about that, he's gonna be withdrawing tonight, or just came up last minute, or?
This was, uh, sent to an email to me today, and you are aware of this, okay. So if you wanted to.
But the gentleman aware of the email, that he was gonna withdraw it.
That's what I understand.
And you're good with it tonight, not to discuss that, withdraw it?
I have no need to discuss it.
Okay.
So you agree to withdraw it tonight, not to talk about it, and we just postpone it?
It's the manager's decision.
I, I, I know, I, I know, I understand.
Right now, the board's decision, right now.
It's on his recommendation.
Correct, correct, I understand, but right now, the board, okay, we're gonna decide yes or no, and I want his opinion, because, you know, again, he, he applied for the position, they say come to the meeting, I understand the town manager's recommendation, whatever, but still, he can have his opinion out, I mean, I don't see why not, and then we can, we can figure if we continue or not on that position.
Okay, Mr. Council Lazo.
On the process and procedure of bringing forward a name, the manager has to recommend, and then the manager, and we confirm, and he goes to subcommittee, you knock the ten, so to speak, the Q and A, and, and then after you push it up with a recommendation, favorable and unfavorable, but if the manager withdraws, that's it, there is no discussion.
Exactly, I agree.
Well, okay, my, my only question is, according to parliamentary procedure.
If he withdraws that, he wants the next agenda item.
As soon as he withdraws something, and this was brought up in a previous meeting, if the agenda is ours, if somebody wants to withdraw it and there's no objection, it's withdrawn, but if there's an objection, then we have to have a vote on withdrawing it, now am I correct?
So you're gonna go, you can go against the town manager's recommendation, go ahead.
Or no, we can make a, a motion to withdraw it, or vote on his withdrawal.
We can make a motion to pass over, considering, there's really nothing to propose.
Okay.
But you name a candidate, when he withdraws the name, it's not possible.
I agree, I agree.
Alright, so I'm asking, if there's no objection, we're gonna pass over it?
I'll make the motion to pass over, you need a motion.
Okay, you second it here?
So then we can't talk anything about the actual position itself?
No.
Next time, when it comes up again.
Okay, well, we'll take a vote on it, has to be, uh, two thirds, all those in favor?
This is not the pass, this is, this is something else.
Alright, so we are passing over, thank you. I believe it does, if you're amending a motion, has to be two thirds, or withdrawing, well, that's what it is.
Motion to pass over.
That's amending it.
That's, no sense.
Alright, well, we'll just go on. Agenda item number six, review, discuss the amendment and restatement of the intermanitiable sewer agreement, and entertain a motion to Town Council for acceptance and to authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
So.
Discussion, is the town manager there?
Sewer Department, yeah.
Okay.
I have a question. I reviewed it, and everything looks pretty much the same.
Okay.
I have one.
Okay, Mr. Spleen.
I'm just curious if, this was done in ninety-eight, I believe?
The original was done in ninety-eight.
So we're just basically extending it for?
It got, uh, it got updated, and I believe two thousand six, two thousand nine, it was updated, and now we're just extending.
Two thousand and nine.
So my question is, I believe that, that interim town manager was involved in this contract when he worked for Sturbridge, is that gonna be a conflict with him now being on Southbridge side?
I wasn't aware that he was a part of that.
He, he wasn't, I, well, he wasn't the manager.
He's got the floor, I think.
No, but was, I'm a selectman, weren't they involved in this, I'm just wondering if it's gonna be a conflict, that's all.
He, he would, he would have to, he would have to raise that, he would have to deal with that issue as a, on the Ethics Commission.
Yeah, you should recuse yourself from that.
That's, that's, that's something that Charlie has to do.
I'm just curious.
As, as the Sewer Department manager, I, I reviewed both contracts, and they're almost identical, um, so I don't see any reason to not push forward with it.
You're all set, anybody else?
Quick question, you said that they're almost identical, how have they changed?
Um, the, one thing that really changed was, uh, under user fees, they put no Sturbridge user shall be required to pay to Southbridge any user connection or other charge. Back when the previous DPW directors were here, we reviewed it, and Sturbridge has never paid, uh, Southbridge a connection fee, because they're connecting to sewer and Sturbridge.
So, so the, the people that are actually getting sewer service, in Sturbridge pays Sturbridge, and then Sturbridge pays us, is that how it works?
We build the town of Sturbridge, or flow.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and that would still continue, um, uh, yeah, this section of the, the verbiage, I think they just wanted to say, if people were to install new houses, they don't have to pay a sewer connection fee to Southbridge, which they never have.
But would, but if, if, if there are more houses that are built along our section of the sewer line, um, does that mean that we will charge Sturbridge for the extra connections? That the, that the town, the town, one town will pay the other, is that how that works? If we're not charging direct connection fees to the individual house owners, I can understand that, that we're actually in contract with the town of Sturbridge, again. But are they, but are, is Sturbridge paying the extra connection fees, if that happens?
No, that, that has not happened since the contract's been put in, to my knowledge.
It has not?
Yeah.
Cause then, one of the issues that, that in Sturbridge is going on is that there's a large subdivision going on, that's in the process, I'm not sure exactly how far in the process it is.
Yeah.
Um, up off of, up off of one thirty-one, there's gonna be, I, I wanna say dozens of houses anyway.
Yeah.
And those are all connecting to the sewer line.
Correct.
So what kind of an impact will that have on our sewer line, on our service and so, so forth?
Yeah, so in, in, in the IMA, um, currently, and with the renewal, they're allowed to discharge up to three hundred thousand gallons per day to the Sewer Department.
Right.
They use thirty thousand a day.
Oh, so, okay, so it's a huge.
So it's, there's more than a capacity or contract existing and renewal to meet that expectation.
And I understand from, like, Sturbridge side, that they're, that, is this, is this only like a five-year contract now, as opposed to the last one, or?
Yes, so it, it, the change there would be, it's, it's five-year contract, after five years, it's one year, a year-over-year renewal.
Yep.
Um, and then after ten, they have to go back to renegotiate in IMA.
Is there, is, are there any consideration on the Sturbridge side for doing something else, other than tying the Southbridge services?
Yes, they're long-term proposing, um, putting in a pumping station, taking their flow, and processing it, processing it through their wastewater plant.
Okay, that's kinda what it's like, and I know, I know that that's millions of dollars, so they're kinda putting that on hold.
Correct.
Right now, okay. Okay, thank you.
Council Lazo.
To my knowledge, we go either, there's no tying fees to services, because we don't own the infrastructure, we just bill them for the flow that goes through to bite into Southbridge, and the sewer capacity's been calculated, we have plenty of capacity to tie in the, um, project.
So Sturbridge owns the infrastructure?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? None, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Uh, agenda item number seven, discussion, reevaluation of the traffic signals at Main, Elm, Central Street, and possible vote to take any action necessary to make the intersection safer for pedestrians. Mr. Chair. Chief, Chief Watson, thank you, thank you for it, gentlemen. I asked to put this on the agenda, um, I have gone, come to your, your meeting, your Traffic Commission meeting, and I've, I've explained to you that there's a lot of issues down there with no turn signals on Main Street. In fact, last week, I was at the intersection of Elm Street and Main, I was sitting at Elm, a lady was trying to cross at Zoe's, cross, cross Elm, somebody on Main Street tried to beat the traffic and almost ran her over, I saw the lady jump back on the curb, and she was pretty shaken up. And then yesterday, I was on Main Street, and someone, I was on Main Street, and someone tried to do the same thing, only they stopped, somebody in the crosswalk, and then they were blocking all the traffic, so I think we need to add the arrows back to Main Street, and that's what I'm proposing, so you have the floor.
Yes.
The DPW Director says, I don't, I'm, I'm here to speak about the concurrent, in terms of the walking signals, that's what I'm.
Okay.
So I can get to that, if you're gonna get this. Some, some of the people may not wanna hear, but I was gonna give you my opinion on it, so I've got calls from a bunch of residents over the last couple of months, or a couple of years. Um, our community now does concurrent walking signals, most major cities have it, uh, we transitioned to it because it speeds up traffic in the community, the flow of traffic, so it's not gridlocked. My personal experiences, Worcester, Boston, New York City, Chicago, um, Big Sky, Montana, I was there a couple of months ago, Sneak, last week, you're talking tourist communities with thousands and thousands and thousands of cars, but more importantly, thousands and thousands and thousands of people walking, they all use concurrent walking signals. Now, when I was in New York, I stepped off the curb at Manhattan, it said walk, everybody's turning right, taxis, Uber drivers, you gotta pay attention. On a personal note, my nephew's twenty-one, he's going to medical school in September, he's a smart kid, he lives in Boston, he got hit by a car a couple of months ago, cause he didn't pick his head up and look, when he was crossing the street, cause it said to walk, so I do have some personal, you know, experience with it, but unfortunately, our residents and our motorists should get used to it, it's, it's used everywhere else, I don't know why Southbridge is different, and I know I'm probably gonna take heat on it, but in my opinion, I would not go back where it was before, we freeze every single intersection in the central, we'll talk about Central Elm and Main, it makes no sense when I'm crossing from Sabres Bank, curb, across Central Street, they freeze, it freezes four intersections, and it ties up traffic all the way to Lake Wells, so that's just my opinion, again, the concept's been used for twenty-five years in enormous cities, small tourist communities, there's not really a lot of issues, you gotta pay attention, we gotta educate the public, we put stuff out on our social media platform, we've done it a couple of times now, trying to educate them on concurrent walking signals, but we seem to be, I don't know, I don't wanna use the wrong words, we're stuck in the past with this, this is the difference with DOT engineers, if this determined would work best in our community, so, DPW Director can speak to it, anybody else can speak to it, but that's just my opinion from the police side of the house.
Okay, I'm gonna go with, uh, Council, uh, Mr. Spleen first.
I understand, Chief, you're talking about the crosswalks, but my question would be, and I agree with you, is that turning lane from Main to Elm, what's your opinion on that? That, you can, when that light turns green, if you're taking a left coming up Main to go onto Elm, you get one car through.
And, and for you, Mr. Chair, I have no issue with adding a signal to that, that might be for the DPW, I'm not throwing you on the bus here.
I just wanted to first stand on that.
I have no issue with that whatsoever, I'm more of the concurrent lock signal guy, and again, we might have a difference of opinions, but we'll make it right, whatever's gonna make it right.
I didn't know there was a lot of accidents since they've taken that way, and people are trying to beat that.
Nope.
Is that something we can look at, about adding that turning signal back in?
I agree, it's, it's, it's a hassle, if I come through that way to come to Town Hall or what have you, you know, like you said, one, one car can get through, and then, you know, with the busy, the amount of volume that that road sees every day, especially during certain hours, you know, you might wait a couple of lights to be able to make that turn, so. Something that we could look at, what the effects, cause and effect would be.
And then, while I still have the floor.
Yep.
Can we look at the traffic light at Main and Marcy Street on the corner of the empty lot? I don't know if you noticed, but when the wind blows, that light keeps spinning.
Keeps getting hit by a trailer truck going into Walgreens, so. And the company that built those is in Main, and they're not as active as our current person that we do have for the other lights.
Cause it's been hit quite a few times lately.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna go with, uh, Ms. Doyle first.
Do you wanna go, go? You know what I'm saying?
Well, he's not next, George Cheney's next, go ahead.
Okay, um, even the, even the, lots of towns do this, I do not agree with the concurrent, um, thing, and it's not just pedestrians who have to look at what they're doing, the cars should be looking at what they're doing as they attempt to run over people trying to cross, um, I think it, it's ridiculous, um, it's, I mean, I've seen many people, they're like, oh, what's going on, um, when they're trying to cross, uh, because it, it, it's too car-centric, and not pedestrian-centric, I mean, pedestrians should be able to cross, yeah, they should, have to take that turn, I'm aware of that, uh, but when that block signal comes on, we should be able to do it.
Alright.
And I do think it ties in with the turning, um, signals, because cars will try to turn, and people wanna cross.
Trying to beat the traffic, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
George?
Reading about what the chief said, I've read about this through the media, and I agree with what he says, but if we change just for us, in, in the big world, you're giving a false sense of security to people that go to other communities that this is active in, so if it's okay in Southbridge, it's not okay in Southbridge, and they go to Sturbridge, for instance, or they go to West, or Dudley, and they're in the same type of system that is presently being used by the DOT, they have a false sense of security over that light, so I agree with the chief, we've gotta educate the people, but as far as automobiles taking a left-hand turn onto, uh, Elm Street, instead of spending the cost of putting up a new traffic head and those kinda things, couldn't they just re-time that signal?
Yeah.
So it goes green, and the other one stays red, for a little bit longer, thirty seconds, maybe, maybe forty-five seconds, and just, just re-time that one light?
Alright, you all set?
Yes, thank you.
Council Steve's?
Actually, he kinda beat me to say, I was saying we should just delay that green, rather than, rather than have to put in a whole extra turning signal, makes sense that way.
That it?
Basically, yeah.
I mean, we do have left turn signals on Elm and Central, not needed, don't you just take those and put those on Main? Alright, Mr. Juul. Alright, Ms. Clemmons?
Yeah, when I saw this on the agenda, I, I really couldn't believe it, only because so much has been done to reassess and assess and assess and put, you know, these lights, all I've ever heard about is the light issues, um, and as a person who actually gets stopped at the grocery store still, by strangers, to say, there's a problem, I almost got hit by a car or something, and I actually sometimes, well, let the chief know when I hear about these things, it was sad, it's sad to hear that. I agree with the chief, everywhere, and I've been fortunate to get, for business, to be at a lot of places, you have to watch stepping off the sidewalk, and I think maybe schools should have a few, you know, some courses with their kids about that, um, you know, I don't know if it's gonna take cautionary signs that say, you know, look both ways before crossing with a sign, with the signal, I don't know, but I think it's an education situation, and people need to, like, you know, just echo the chief, that they need to learn better, but also, I think it wouldn't hurt, the right-on-red scenario is a really big problem, I think, that's, that's your bigger problem, and so, that was before you changed the lights, the right-on-red situation where people, it's not stop and look and go, it's slow down and just hit the right, so when people were crossing in the crosswalks even then, you know, you were almost getting hit by people crossing on a red, you knew it was a red signal, you might look, it's a red signal everywhere, and yet, you've got the right-on-red, so some enforcement there, some, I don't care, give them some data, make some, you know, make some noise with stopping people, I suggested to people who see those who do things illegally to take their place, and, you know, contact the police, that's the, the information I give, um, because it's hard for people to be everywhere, and you can't just blame lack of enforcement, lack of this, lack of that, it's the combination in our community, and, and I agree, I don't think you should be changing the lights, the Elm light stinks, I take every occasionally, just to do a loop, instead of waiting there, um, so I agree with the, the Elm situation as well, but, sorry, people, you gotta, you gotta take responsibility for crossing the street.
Okay, you all set?
Thank you.
Council Dow?
Thank you, Chair, for you, how about those, uh, when they cross in the number from like ten, eight, nine, eight, seven, then the board, the driver, and the person crossing the road, taking, you know, like, it's like a little bit tension, you know, like.
For you, Mr. Chair, I don't, I'm assuming most can be programmed to do that, but I, I don't know that, that's not my area of expertise.
Yeah, we have to look at those and see what they're capable of.
Not a bad idea.
You all set, alright?
I think that's what happened, you go to Boston, I wash.
Steve, you got something?
No, I'll say, I do.
Francine, head her in.
Francine?
So I just have two comments about that intersection, number one, if there were signs, maybe there were posted that says, unfortunately, people don't know that pedestrians have the right of way, because I've been taking a right on from Elm onto Main, person is in the crosswalk, and I get honked at, because I'm stopped, and the guy behind me is going, and then that guy right there in the crosswalk, with the light, you know, so, um, the other thing is, I've gotten in an accident taking a left from Main onto Elm, not realizing that, you know, again, the person came out in front of me, but you're, that traffic coming down, and you've got a line of ten or twelve, and you're trying to make your, your, your turn, if that, like, someone suggested having that turn be a little bit longer, and having the traffic coming down Main stop for thirty seconds, it would give two or three cars the chance to go through that intersection.
Yeah.
Safely, the problem is, it's not safe to take a left turn, until every car goes through the lane, through Main Street, and they, somebody courteously stops, which does not happen.
So the issue.
And you can take a right from Main onto Elm, why can't you take a left from Main onto Elm?
So the issue I have with that, even if you give a delay, and somebody's going, okay, I got the green, and they're gonna go, somebody's in that crosswalk, so it doesn't make sense to have them both going at the same time, right?
That crosswalk should not, if we have a green, and you're trying to take a turn, it has to be green, that nobody can cross the crosswalk.
Okay, Ms. Clemmons?
Sorry, I just want comment, I, I heard the comment that the guy, whoever put the lighting system up, up there at Main and Marcy, bummer, you know, they're up in Main, and they're a little slower than our other people we use now, but if they're still legally bound to us for a couple of years, the way I always hear, like, at the Central Street parking lot, when I complain about the cracks, and, oh, we have to get to our engineer before our timeframe is up, I don't care if they're slower than everybody else, that's an excuse for letting them off the hook for getting things done that they owe us, but if they, you know, if, if unfortunately, you know, we don't have any recourse, but if they did something wrong, then they need to be held accountable, and I say that to every department, every time we talk about something where we kinda throw up our hands and say, oh, well, we, we can't get the rugs fixed because they didn't put them in right, oh, we can't get the munis right because they screwed us on the training and stuff, oh, the light guy is slow, he's in Main, we need to be, I'm not saying it bad against anybody here, what I'm saying is, we have to have a different attitude in Southbridge, we deserve to get what we are, we are, we paid for, and so I'm just saying, I'm reiterating that statement from the last meeting we had too, cause I'm tired of hearing excuses that people screw us, excuse my French, but, all the time, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, does this committee wanna do anything, you wanna make a, a vote to, to advise him to do something, or you just wanna ask him to take a look at it? What would you like to do? I left it open as, uh, take any action necessary.
I think he's already gonna look at it.
So that's as far as you wanna go with it?
For the moment.
Okay.
When, when we want him to come back?
Next meeting, right?
I mean, he's gonna have to reach out to the light company and get.
Yeah.
Well, they already did, they already did that, and they advised not to do it, but I'm saying that it's still dangerous.
How we're telling them to do it.
It's still dangerous, so, alright, no other discussion? Oh, Mr. Pioppi, go ahead.
The barrels we used to have, it's like, you know, we, we could stop for pedestrian crosswalk.
Yeah.
Like, we, we'd load ourselves, but it's not a bad idea.
No, it's not bad.
Why don't we put the traffic directing barrel back in the room, and shit solved, anyway?
Guy got killed.
We used to drive by and talk to that thing, see how many guys would get in.
Go ahead, sir.
Chief, how much more traffic do we have now than we did five years ago?
Good, great question, uh, for you, Mr. Chair, we've, we've gone up to a lot, I think it's almost fifty thousand guys a day now, Main Street, forty-five thousand, and change, as opposed to, you know, twenty-five years ago, twenty years ago, when Paul McPaven first did that project, so actually, two thousand twenty, or, I'm sorry, two thousand, so twenty-three years ago, they, uh, that's when they froze all the intersections, and then the most recent project went to concurrent, because the traffic has increased so much, that the traffic was just getting worse and worse and worse every year, and that's why all the cities have been doing it for years, because they have such a high volume of pedestrian and vehicle traffic that they had to lower that system, else we didn't have to do that years ago, now we have traffic.
So just stopping the traffic at that intersection and let people cross, how much it, it would be detrimental to the rest of the town?
I would, in my opinion, it would go back to what it was back in two thousand, and we've got complaints constantly about the traffic issues, anybody that's lived here a long time knows, coming through that center of town in the middle of the day, twenty years ago, was not easy, it takes ten minutes to get, you know, through the whole Main Street.
And actually, I disagree, I'd say the traffic moved much better before there were signals.
And I can, I can, I can disagree.
I would agree with you.
I can tell you from, I can tell you from structural production, was thirty percent of the lights.
Okay, hold on.
Could take Haggerty.
He still has the floor, are you all set?
Sure.
Okay, are you all set, Mr. Pioppi? Okay, did you want to say something, Mr. Council?
Yeah, take the lights off, put the traffic blocks with a carpet in.
We have to take those lights, Council Haggerty put those lights out there.
You'll have to fund another office then.
Wrong, is that gonna make traffic worse?
Let's say, let's say. Alright, hold on, so you're gonna take a look at this, I don't wanna keep delaying this.
Yeah.
Heather said the same thing, she's gonna look at it, here we are, a year later.
He doesn't look like Heather. Mike?
I'll come over, I'll bring you all over to.
He doesn't look like Heather, he's gonna get it done.
Alright, thank you, then we'll move on to agenda item number eight, discussion, changes to the trenching regulations. I put this on here, thanks, Chief, I put this on here, cause we have been talking about our trenching regulations, and if they needed to be beefed up a little bit, stronger regulations, have you had a chance to look at them?
The only thing that I've found so far, is there like a written guideline for specific regulations that the town has? Cause all I've been able to find so far is a couple of crayon drawings of a trench.
You don't know where the trenching, trenching regulations are?
All I've found so far is these two pictures of what trench repair should be.
Well, that's part of the whole thing.
We got those, we got those same ones.
It's like twelve, it's like twenty-five pages.
So I've been searching through my drive on my computer, looking for document, but I, I, it's, it's not a very well-organized system, so there's, there's things kind of all over the place, so I find things. the place. So I find things in places that's like, "Hi, I was looking at that yesterday."
Well, Mr. Splain.
Our website is not that well organized, unfortunately.
All right, thank you. Mr. Splain, did you want to say something?
So what, can I ask, what are the specific concerns about, obviously, I've seen some of the recent work that's been done in town, and, you know, obviously, there's definitely some concerns about what happens when contractors come into town, what they can get away with. If I can stick around here a while, I would like to make some changes to what they can get away with.
All right, I will send to you the regulation and our, and our proposed changes. Or you're sending it to them now? And then I will send to you a copy of what we were proposing to make changes. We had a meeting, we sat here, and I'm gonna let Splain talk now. All right.
The big thing is, is if you read this document, it's about a hundred and thirteen pages long, with all the diagrams like you have. We're asking you to look at it. We asked them to pass to have it done, and the excuse kept saying, "Wait till we get a new director, wait till we get a new director." We're twenty months into this now. Asinine as far as I'm concerned. We need to somehow come up with, when a contractor doesn't do what he's supposed to do according to these regulations, whether you agree with what's there, make suggestions to change, improve them, whatever, there's no repercussions that happen. We've had contractors open up roads on weekends, stuff doesn't get inspected, and they backfill it with three-inch stones.
It was bigger than that.
There's no repercussion. We got, and the biggest problem that we have, and for ten years, we haven't had anybody inspecting any trenches that get opened in this town. So the contractors are getting away with not doing what's supposed to be done, and that's why our roads look the way we do. We need to put some teeth into this and get on with it because our roads are horrible. You drive around any other town, they're not like ours. You've been here a short period of time, and anytime a contractor does work in this town, the town pays for it. Look at West Street. Look at South Street. I don't care what Heather said, those patches are unacceptable to me. So we're asking you to look at this document, take our suggestions, give us some of yours, and see if we can come up with a game plan and really start enforcing these regulations, bylaws, whatever they want to call them, because the taxpayers in this town are paying for it hard.
I think a lot of what you're looking for is definitely a lot of oversight that's been missed over the years, not having somebody in the position that actually is, not necessarily standing out there with an iron fist, but paying attention to what's going on and being an enforcement person that knows what they're talking about when they, when they approach somebody and say, "Okay, that's not right." Because most contractors that you've ever worked with, especially some that have been in business for an awful long time, they have an answer for everything that you can come up with. I mean, a lot of times, the only way that you can stop them is just look right at them and say, "Listen, you're in contract with us, this is how I want you to do it, this is what you're getting paid for, this is how it's gonna happen." So it's, it's basically putting, putting the law down, you know. I do have a meeting coming up, I have one next week and one the following week, in regards to West Street and South Street. And the South Street one is after the West Street meeting, but we're definitely gonna discuss them both at the same time because if there's not cooperation from the group of individuals that's running the show, we're gonna hold up work until they fix the other problem.
So, if I may, I agree with what you're saying. And this committee's been trying to do that with this position and this construction supervisor guy. But the people that keep getting brought forward to us, I mean, the first guy wasn't even qualified. I mean, you can't hire salesmen and salespeople to do that job. You need to get somebody who knows what he's doing.
You all set?
Yes.
I'm gonna go with Lozlo first, and then Mr. Julian, and then Mr. Lozlo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to piggyback a little bit off of what Kevin said. The road he's talking about, I got a call from a resident, from a motorcycle driver that went over this. It was on a Friday afternoon, I get the call. They put the new duplex on Chalston Street, it was an out-of-town contractor. They never, they backfilled the road and it went halfway into the road, so one lane was all gravelled with rocks about this big all over the road because the cars kept pushing it out. This guy almost got killed on his motorcycle there. I took it upon myself to put my four-way lights on. I called the DPW because they were closed, so I called the police department, and they said they'd go out and send somebody up there. The guy had barrels out in, on the property, I put them across the road. I had tape on my truck, I taped it off. I broomed the rocks back in the middle of the road where it belonged. And it was on a Friday afternoon, and this contractor's from out of town, the new duplex on Chalston Street, I don't think they know where it is, but that's what happened. It's not the local contractors that are doing this. It's the ones from out of town, and that's what I have a problem with. And I just want to say, keep an eye on the out-of-towners more than the locals, that's the problem. Thank you.
So something like that, it should have been plated or patched, not just left open, and that happens all the time. I'm gonna go with Mr. Julian next.
He said what I was gonna say.
All right. Now, Mr. Boudreau, did you have your hand up? I thought you put your hand up earlier.
I mean, if I can freely speak, I, I was in Rich's position before, several years ago. I have the experience, I know there's been a change in the guy. I understand how it all works. I've had some conversations with the new director, and he definitely knows what he's gonna be doing. I've got excellent sense of that coming from me, but you guys know it was a hole in the wall. I'm just kind of shell shocked. I'm very well qualified for the, for the position, but at the same time, I understand that there's a new manager. The DPW director is new, and together, they can probably make the changes from what I've seen with Rich.
All right, thank you. We're talking about the trenching bylaw right now. Mr. Lozlo, Counselor Lozlo.
I personally don't think we need more regulations. I think we need, I think the DPW has had it. We need enforcement. If a contractor's gonna play a game like that, do Paul Heyman Clark, call in the bond, fix the street, pull the license, you don't work in Southbridge. The guy, he'll get his attention. That's the process. But we don't do that here. We give them eight miles of rope until someone drives into it. I think we just gotta enforce what we have. I think we'll be fine.
All right, thank you. Guy behind you raising his hand, your name, please?
Mike Zuziak. Who issued the permit on Charles Street for a trench?
I don't know.
Good question.
And they're responsible for five years. So before they move in, don't, don't let the villain, he's about to sign off.
I don't think it's finished yet, though.
Don't let him sign off.
Right.
We will. That's what is right.
You're right.
Hold on, Mr. Piyapi. Are you all set, sir?
Yes.
Mr. Piyapi?
You know, maybe there needs to be more of a communication between DPW and the building inspector as far as signing off, you know, making sure that before the building inspector gives them the certificate of occupancy, the DPW is satisfied that what the contractor left behind.
All right, thank you. Mr. Harding?
Just to let Mr. Piyapi know that we have been working hand-in-hand with the building inspector lately, and Chalston Street is not getting signed off.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I got a question. Is there some way we can, with NUCO, is there a way we can shut them down or stop them in four weeks when they start ripping our roads up again to repair what they've already have ripped up? Or can we force them to pave all of that before we let them keep ripping up more roads? Is that a possibility? And get it under this trenching regulation that we have? Because it's my understanding, they don't even pull permits to do any of this.
Can I answer that question once I read that document?
Can you get in touch with me on that? Because, I mean, like you said, you're new to the town. Sure you haven't driven around every road in town, but they've ripped up quite a bit of roads.
What I've seen is, it's pretty bad.
And I mean, we just can't let them keep ripping up roads with, letting them sit for a year or two years before they, for us on.
All right, thank you. Are you all set?
Yes.
Counselor Steve?
I'll, I'll shine at it. I think one of the key areas right now that we're seeing is, I don't think we have a chance to go down, the side streets, basically, basically all of the side streets down, down toward the West Street school, all those little side streets there. They've been doing trenching work down there. Their trenches are about this region wide. And they actually did get a little, put a little pressure on them to pave like half of Everett Street, and that actually looks halfway decent. It's the little side streets that are completely maxed.
So typically, and there again, in that, in that document, we'll probably have that information, but a lot of towns have it set up so that, you know, there's a requirement, a trench requirement for repairs to the road. So, you know, after, once the company comes in and they do all of their work, so NUCO comes in, they install a gas main, once they do their tie-ins, they run the system live, whatever they also, they have to do to complete their work, then they have to come back and they have to make a permanent repair for their patch.
Exactly.
Typically, most towns will make them do, if the trench runs the length of the road, they'll make them do half the road. One of the things that's been done in the past, which I did see there was some stuff in some of the paperwork that I saw was supposed to happen with some of the side streets down here, I believe, was that there was talk about taking the check in lieu of those repairs, and then the town taking the money from the, you know, National Grid or whoever, and then taking the rest of the money from the town's coffers to just do the whole street. I've done that in the past, and I've set it up, my previous town post, we set it up so that in lieu of check, we set it into its own account for that specific road, so that it couldn't be touched for something else. So that's, that's something that, you know, I'll look at and see, you know, what there are for, you know, verbiage in that document, and if there's things that we can add to make it work out better.
And in your experience, when it comes to those in lieu of checks, how much money should they be, should they be charged so that we have enough money to do the job?
So typically, it's, typically, it's something that goes between my, the director from the town and representative from either the contractor or the utility. So basically, I would go out, take a measurement of the street, you know, get the square yardage, and then formulate a price on the grinding and then the paving up to, you know, proper depth for whatever we're requiring them to replace. So if we put it, if it's, if it's not in there already, and we said, "Okay, well, it's gonna be two inches," you know, from center of road to the shoulder line to the curb line. And then also, there's usually something in there for, if there's service crossings with so many feet, they have to do that section also so they connect, so you don't have speed bumps. So we'll, we'll look at that and, you know, it's like I said, it's not just them saying, "Okay, we'll give you this much money." It is, it's a mutual agreed price based on the current costs of material and labor or what, what have you to do that work.
If there, like the situation, if you've seen Everett Street, they said the, the main line was down one side of Everett, but all the crossings cut to the other side.
All that was.
Yeah, can we, can we require them to pave the entire road under those circumstances?
Depends on what's, what our regulations state.
And can we change the regulations to make that work?
That's what we're asking.
That's what we have to review. We have to see what we got and see what we can do moving forward. Because there, and there's plenty of other towns and even state level things that we can copy off of some of that verbiage to make that happen, you know.
Good.
Very good.
At the moment, thank you.
Ms. Clemens, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you. It's refreshing to hear somebody make a comment about, "You're supposed to be doing half the road." I can tell you that many years ago, with our previous director, that was brought up as to why we're only allowing like four feet. Well, we went to six feet. If they do a trench, we make them do six feet, I said, "So you leave a trench in the middle of the road, you leave a scar down the middle, down the middle of that side. That makes no sense, especially when it dug up so much." And then when it came to some of what's going on now, I disagree. Everett Street got a patch, that's nice, but that's not a good job. That's, that's again, a portion, they didn't even, it's not an edge to middle, it wasn't a complete half a job, it's a patch, a big patch. So it's unfortunate. I certainly hoped we finally, because, I mean, I used to have business owners come to me and say, other towns they lived in, because they weren't from here, had regulations that weren't half the street or were, or more so than what was going on. And all I ever got was, "Well, you know, it's, you can't really, you can't, it's a utility, they have rights or whatever." And it made no sense to me, and it doesn't now. What you're saying makes much more sense, which is, everyone's gonna work together because they don't have the right to, again, run over the community. But we need a strong person or people, a strong group, to make that happen. So half-street minimum, that Everett mess with all the laterals, that's a full street if you ask me, and a lot of other streets like that or like that. So I say we bring it, and if not, we bring on some state level people to fight our battles too, because they actually have a lot of pull with utilities. I've used them before in issues, so.
We can, we can win battles with utilities, that's not impossible.
Absolutely, because they, they're gonna work, they're gonna be in the community.
We had railroad in town, I tell you that you were at large, because you can't win battles.
On the suggestion of money, when it comes to, you know, if we did sign some unfortunate big work of money in lieu of, there should still be a time limit and an, and an increase on that, you know, influx in, in funding in the sense that if they say, "Well, jeez, we're gonna put some money in the bank for you, we're done Everett, but we weren't gonna, we weren't intending to do it," not us, them, that they weren't intending to do it longer. Well, that, every day that they postpone, that what they would have done costs more money because expenses go up. So what they promised us at the beginning, a year or two ago, is costing us a lot more. So if we don't have some escalator in there, then that's no good either. So we definitely need some escalator and something.
That, that falls on us after that. So if you, if you do it in that manner where you do in lieu of, instead of having them make a repair to half the road, they give us the check for what the cost is at that point in time to do that work as agreed upon. And then that's it. They wash, they wash their hands of it. The only reason why, that's not something that we would necessarily do all the time under every circumstances. Probably quite often due to the condition of most roads in town, but we would have to be prepared to put forth the money on our own to do the other half at that time.
But, but at the same point, they should have a time limit. So say they're doing ten roads, well, that's not our problem. There needs to be a time per road, yes.
Yes, okay. Not, not as like a whole project. So they come to us and say that they have like a five-year plan, that they're gonna do main work on such and such streets. Obviously, some of that will also come in, you know, other things that'll come into play is our own infrastructure improvements like water or whatever.
Well, yeah, you want to do everything when it's open.
We want to be able to do what we can. Obviously, right now, the roads in this town are in such horrible condition that, you know, we can't plan on rebuilding every single one of them from underground up. We're gonna have to do some work to some to try to make it so we're not paying losses. But we're, we're gonna worry about this. We're gonna, we're gonna make it work. We're gonna figure out how we can best make it work for the town of Southbridge and make it so we can actually get something out of this.
Right. Just accountability is the main thing. And I would disagree, we aren't the worst road in the state. I've traveled quite a bit. I've been to Quincy and all kinds of places where there's a lot more money and the roads are atrocious, so.
Take a ride up Ellis Road.
I used to live there, dear. I tried to pave it.
Something to consider too, and I have always tried to advocate for is, if it, when, like, if you, if we, the town ever gets to the point, like other towns, where it puts out an annual contract, if you put up in the annual contract milling and paving, like smaller quantities, so that the company that mills and paves for National Grid had the opportunity to be paid by the town to finish some of the streets while they're there, it would probably go faster, you know, because their square yard costs for those trenches are much higher than ours. You know, we have options.
All right, thank you. Counselor Steve?
Yeah, just a quick observation. According to the trenching bylaws, subsection nine, it says, "Any street opening in excess of a hundred square feet may require additional provisions for patching, including but not limited to milling and overlay, one lane rip, curb to to curb, or such area as determined by the DPW director."
All right.
There you go.
So if you can take a look at it, see what you can see, if you think it needs to be toughened up, or as Counsel Lozlo said, it's fine as it is, we just need better oversight. We would appreciate it. So we're gonna move on to the next agenda item number nine, discuss status of Ellis Road project. Would some, one of you would like to talk to that?
Jim just walked out.
Well, he's the contractor.
He's hiding the horn over there.
I want to know what the status is of it right now. Are we moving ahead with that? Hold on. Are we moving ahead with that project? Because we did vote to move ahead with that project.
I, that I'm not sure of at the moment. I know that the town manager's been doing a lot of research on that, and we were supposed to sit down and have a discussion about what he came up with. I did give some opinion on some things that he mentioned about how potentially the last people to pave that road could have possibly been the town back a long, long time ago. Obviously, we've probably paved it a few more times with the amount of pothole patching that's been done on that road over the years. So that's, basically, he wants to have a dead-set absolute legal opinion, and I know it's been done before, I heard all of the things, and I'm not gonna speak yea or nay on it at the moment. I just, I want to know what he came up with. I thought maybe he would be here tonight, but apparently not.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Counsel McCary. I don't know why we discussed it. Nine councils vote for it.
That's right.
This is, is like a kindergarten.
I agree.
What's the council's job? If the previous town manager didn't do his job for some kinda... If, if the previous town manager didn't do his job for some kinda games he's playing, I think it's enough, time to move forward. Nine councils vote for that road to be paved. I don't know why we're discussing it.
Hold on, hold on.
Thank you.
Mr. Julian?
So the reason why there's discussion about this council doubt is because the, when the bid went out, it didn't go out for the money that it needed to do the project correctly.
Why the contractor bid on it? If he knows not correct?
Was all the money in to do the project correctly?
Not, not back at all.
Well, we bid, we bid unit prices. It's not, it wasn't put out specifically as a job, it was put out with other streets. We bid unit prices on all the streets and the, the assessment of the condition, needs of the road that was made by our former director and assistant director were, were far from what the road needs. You know, we can't spend a ton of money on paving to wanna have it last. Road is why it drained.
There was no money in there for trees or drainage. You don't know what's under that road, once you pulverize it, you might have to bring in gravel. There was no money in there for that. It was just a matter of pulverizing it, re-grading what was there and you can't do that sometimes.
No test holes were done. It's, 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 it's fallout of incompetence.
Right.
Hold on, are you all set? I'm gonna let Counselor Dow and I will go to you.
Why you went and bid on the road if you know all these things, you wasn't done? As a contractor and now you're telling me, one, two, three is wrong, why you took the job from the beginning and now when you realize you're gonna lose on it, you're trying to figure how you're gonna walk away from that job? Let's be honest about it. Let me finish, let me finish, let me finish, let me finish. When, when Heather bring that project in or Matthew, whatever, was everything studied the way we want to have it done? And you guys went and bid on it? It was not discussed as this is not done and we need to do this or we need to do this? Those, first time I hear him right now, before it wasn't up right, when you bid on the, on the road. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Benoit next, then I'll come back to you, Mr. Piyabi.
So obviously I wasn't here for any preceding issues that led to this discussion. And I don't know how to properly move forward with, you know, what's gonna happen moving forward with doing the road. In a, what I would suggest would maybe be to, I know that, I don't know what the legalities are of it, Mr. Piyabi did win the bid to do the work on that road. So at this point, we obviously know that there is some mistakes in what was bid, whether it was his fault, our fault, or whomever's fault. I think that under the circumstances, I agree that we don't know what's there. You know, you look at a road that's built into a hillside, there's a lot of water that comes off of the hill. There definitely needs to be some drainage work down there. And, you know, once you remove that cap, who knows what's under it? It could be, it could be ledge, it could be boulders, it could be anything that was used to build the road. Could have been stuff from the junkyard up the street, we have no idea. So I would propose that we did some test holes first and figure out what's in the ground. You know, do lots, set it up in lots and dig it.
Hold that one down.
Okay.
They have a lot of info on that road, more and what, you know, you just came in.
Right, well, like I said, I just.
We'd be fighting with that road for a lot of years. And every time we come to, okay, go ahead, this is the budget, pave it, somebody push it back. Political wise.
Not, not trying to.
Personal wise, you know, I don't wanna get in it exactly, but I think it's very clear. And now we vote nine council, when the DPW director came to be fun of us, he said the road need to be done one, two, three, and this is how much we're gonna put money on it. We say, okay, go ahead, you have a green light, regardless what's going on. Went out for a bid, they bid on it, they realize Matthew left, he can't get a second, what do you call that? More money on it, he dropped the ball and now he's saying this is not done, this is not done?
So now I'll make a suggestion. If that's, if that's how you feel about it.
This is what is true.
Okay, I'm, hold on, hear me out. So if that's how it plays out, this is what you want, you already put the money aside for it. And I know that there's, there's specs in there, I don't know what's left in those funds that didn't go into the other streets. So I know there was line items in there for a little bit of drainage work, maybe some other stuff. There's some trees that need to come out. You know, there is a drainage swell on the, you know, hillside of that road that collects water. There are some means to disperse it. There's some issues with culvert pipes that go under people's driveways and such. Depending on how much money is there now, if the town is gonna pay to do that road and you say, okay, this is how much money we have to do it, then Mr. Piyabi comes in with a reclaimer, grinds the road, has it graded to what's there, cleans off the trenches and pays it, and that's what you get. And you see how long it lasts.
And it won't last?
It won't last. That's the problem, because now you're throwing money at something, it's not gonna work.
This isn't a game, I see.
It's not a game.
It is, because when he bid on it, it's supposed to be done the right, whatever on the, on that paperwork was provided for him.
Counselor Dow, hold on. All right, hold on.
Regardless of what, what, what Mr. Piyabi says or anybody else that's here, it comes down to how much money it's gonna cost.
Exactly.
If you wanna throw money at shit, go ahead, you make the decision. I'm not putting my name on it.
And neither am I.
All right, thank you.
Let, let me just.
Why you bid on it?
You got something new to say, Mr. Piyabi?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I like, first of all, Joe, we, when we bid on a job, we don't know that we're gonna be well bid. And we, we bid on multiple jobs, you don't analyze every job we have. But, you know, if it's not obvious, it's obvious, it would be obvious to Ray Charles that the people that were directing the work that was done in town before weren't capable or competent of overseeing, specking, quality work. I mean, we have a, if you, you know, South Street's a mess. South Street will never last. I mean, so, so the point is. The point is, I mean, Richard, we're trying to do, we're trying to spend the money wisely. I mean, what, you know, we're gonna spend four hundred thousand dollars and have it fall apart? Because, because, I mean, there's not even gravel item in the bid for, for the road work. There isn't even an item to buy gravel. Gravel's a pretty basic element of road work. I, I didn't write the specs for the job.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna let, go ahead, Counselor, and then I'm gonna go to Counselor Dow.
How long, how long are you being in that business?
A long time.
I want, I want him to answer. How long you been in that business?
Almost forty years.
So you're gonna tell me you don't have the experience before you bid on the job? Make sure everything you're asking for it right now.
I pointed, I pointed it all out.
You just saw it like this, I, I, give me the road and I'm gonna bid on it?
No, I pointed it all out, Joe, I pointed it all out, you saw what we were working on.
Why you wanna put your name on it before, why now change?
Because I, because if I, if I wasn't here carrying, some of the contractors would have come along and done just what was in the spec and you've done something that didn't last, that's why.
Did you talk to be fun of the council or DPW before, say, all these problems?
I, I talked to the old DPW director till I was blue in the face and he didn't get me.
All right, hold on. Counselor Lazo?
That road was gravel based underneath the pavement that's here for about five years. The town maintained the gravel base, gravel base. They put gravel on it every year, they'd have washouts. There was one DPW director stepped up, the council said, let's put the drainage in and then they talked it. So they put the drainage, got all the easements from the low end of the road to run the pipes there. They put culverts on the high side, they're supposed to run it down to the low side, then they paved it. Years and years go by and the road lets go. A lot of what Mr. Piyabi is talking about is he's right. The thing that I just didn't understand was, everybody's excited that Ellis Road's gonna get done. Deja Dan and the director, everything's full steam ahead. All the elevations are marked on the pavement. All the trees are posted that have to come down. And then all of a sudden, there's a, there's a discussion of other things that have to be done. And then the, the point is, if it's incompetency that did the spec, I, I, I do understand that, I go on jobs and, and I look at them and someone, even an engineer can make a mistake. I said, why are you doing this on this foundation, this, this structure? Because an automatic question comes into play, even when you look at the pre, the pre-bid, when you go in, you look at the job. So I think there's a lot going on here. Everybody thought it was gonna get paved in the spring. And, and nine counselors voted to pave it. And our town manager all of a sudden starts second guessing whether he, well, he thought it was just the north side. The guy is incompetent, I'm glad he's gone. Bottom line comes down to is, this has to stop. And part of what Piyabi's saying is right. The incompetency is the reason why we step all over ourselves. And then you've heard all your sneakers, accountability. Everybody comes in, just does what they want and we're holding the bag. I'm not saying we shouldn't start to look at it and, and take in some suggestions on what do you think is wrong with this road. That has to happen. But again, going forward, nine counselors voted yes, let's do it. And I am the town manager box, should have fired him at that point, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Stevens?
I've got two questions that are related to this. One is, an honest appraisal of the way the bid, the project is currently bid, what would you actually do and how long would it last?
Who are you asking?
Who are you asking?
Who are you asking?
Currently bid, what would, currently spec, what would you actually do to the project and how long would it last?
Are you asking Mr. Piyabi?
Actually, I wanna hear both of them.
So, not to get Jimmy excited, so I'll, I'm gonna ask him a simple question and then I'm gonna answer the rest of it, okay? What is exactly his bid? Is it a mill, is it a reclaim, a grade? So reclaim and grade and then pave?
And replace, and replace, like the cross drains and stuff and reditch the road. But you can't get the road to any width the way it is. There's, there's, the, the culverts under the driveways on the east side are way too shallow. There's extensive driveway work that has to happen to get the grades down. There's water, there, groundwater that bleeds out of the driveways and causes ice. We're gonna get subdrains up some of those driveways.
Keep it simple. So based off of all of that, you know, obviously dealing with a road that has water coming out of the hill. There, the road is trenched, no Jim's concerned about width. Obviously, if you put drainage in, you'll get a little extra width. Do we know what we're after when we put drainage in? Soon as you dig in, what are we putting in for drainage? Are we putting in a sump that's four or six feet deep and running pipes and having something that we can clean up? Are we gonna run into ledge in doing that?
Right.
Obviously, that's a huge concern, that's a huge cost concern. But leaving in an open trench, how long will it last? As long as it takes for the water to infiltrate underneath the road. You know, if you can, if you can manage the water so it does, it, it leaches off properly through that drainage swell, it, you know, but you're, you're, you're fighting a losing battle to start with because that water is coming at the road. And it's not, you cannot pitch the road the other way because then you're gonna inundate the properties that are below on the other side with all of that drain water. So you have to control the water as it flows, that's gonna come up against the road. Once the water gets underneath the road, it's, it's jumping. You know, it might take a couple of years, it might take five years, but it's, it's, it's just inevitable. It's the, it's just gonna, that's how it works. So you, especially with the freeze thaw cycles that we've been seeing for the last, you know, three to five years here with the winters that we've been having, it's, it's gonna be a cost of motion. Do I think we need to invest ten million dollars to pave Ellis Road? No. You know, I think we need to look at ways of doing it, you know, as cost effective as possible while controlling the water. That's my suggestion, is to look, not, not to reinvent the wheel and start it all over again, but get rid of the questions of the competency of the past. If, you know, I haven't been let in on, you know, how this whole situation's played out. I was told that there was questions about ownership of the road, whatever. If the town has opted to say, okay, we're gonna take care of that road, then obviously that's my job to take care of that road. Let's look at it, do it the best that we can and keep, but keep it reasonable. Not go and say, okay, we need to widen the road four or five feet for proper traffic. I don't know, how, how many years has that road been there, Mr. Lazo?
That's been paved and it took thirty-two years to get it the way it is. It was talked and thirty-three years later it broke.
As far as width goes, I mean.
It's never changed.
It's never changed.
One spot, you can't even house two cars.
I moved there thirty-four years ago.
I mean, there's some shit going on.
I know that there's safety concerns with passing waters or whatnot, but is there like significant traffic issues on the road that necessitate having to, having it to be much wider?
No.
You know, if we could get it a little bit wider, that would probably help, I would assume, but.
I think at one point there's a curb and a fall off. I think, yeah, that's what, what everybody's talking about, but for the most part, I mean, it's not, well, it's not a heavy traffic road. It's no residence.
No, but we need to guarantee it's safe.
Okay, hold on now, Counselor Stevens still hasn't answered.
And the follow-up question is, okay, to do what you are suggesting, what do you think the project would actually cost?
I can't say that right now, honestly, honestly. I've driven down the road twice, I mean, we would have to, I'd have to walk it, we'd have to measure, I'd have to look to see what was there. I would really like to do some dig safe and, and dig in some locations and see what's underneath there. You know, look at the, look at where the water goes, look at, see if there's any issues because, you know, no matter what, that, the trench that's there is not working to what it needs to. So it's not processing the water that we need to process. So what's gonna happen now if we do some drainage? Now we're directing all of that water to control points. So I know that, you know, Phil did point out, he drove down there with me one day. He showed me that, you know, we do have a, you know, a, a right of way or whatever for drainage, the right to drain through certain areas. So we, we need to look at that, what's gonna happen with all that water? Is it gonna create a problem for people below the road? Not, like I said, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we just have to make sure we don't create more problems.
Right.
And maybe we also have to make sure that it's not just open it up and then open the checkbook too. Because that's what happens, once it's open, it's beam up.
Right.
You all set, Counselor?
Thank you.
I'm gonna go with Lazo next, and then Mr. Piyabi.
Oh, my comment was gonna be that the last time that they put the easements in the drainage, thirty-something years ago, it lasted thirty, thirty-two years to what it is now. Before it was a gravel base, when Dennis lived there, I lived there. I've been there, I've never moved off and, again, whatever workmanship was going through it, the trees or whatever, as it sits right now, it lasted thirty years.
Well, how much, the question, how much asphalt was put on the road when they paved it?
I have no idea.
Was it actually like paved, like with a machine?
No.
It was never paved, paved, it was mostly just hands.
No, what they did was, they did a pug over the road and grinding and they compacted it in. I mean, it lasted, it was great when you put it in. But again, it's not the durability, it's not.
Right, so that's a soft material and that, that breaks up as it moves.
Okay, I'm gonna go with Mr. Piyabi next.
You know, I wouldn't call the condition of what's there now anything close to being a road. Maybe not with the longevity that they're thinking, but based on our unit price, on our unit, bid unit cost, we estimated, we estimate that'll take eight hundred thousand to fix the road. That's the whole thing, the challenge. Which I think is a lot of money for that road, as a taxpayer. I, I spoke to Hamer Clark about it, I ran into him, old DPW director, to get some clarification because I'm a little nervous about working on a road if it's private. Whether we're directed to or not, without ready entry forms for every single private property. He told me, the thing, the thing he commented on to me is that the first half is private. It does need substantial drainage and we look at a million dollars to fix it now. That being said, we do this kind of work all the time for small towns. We do it typically under annual contract, not, not under bid as a job. Annual contract is when a town bids materials and services specifically like equipment rental, gravel. So we did three miles of road last year in Harland and Brimfield. The average square yard cost, including paving, and, you know, that's supplemented with town equipment and men and not men, was thirty dollars a square yard. The cost of Ellis Road under the bid price will be a hundred and seventeen dollars a square yard. I advocated forever with Heather and directors before that they should bid that way so the town had that tool in their toolbox as an option to work on roads like that. That's really the solution to that road.
All right, thank you. The only thing I'll say is that it's not a private road. It's not a private road, it's been traveled on for fifty years. If people have been traveling on that road for fifty years, it's no longer a private road. But if you wanna do it legal-like, then make it a public road. It's as simple as that. Ms. Clemens?
The problem making a public road is it has to go to subdivision specs.
Exactly.
There's not enough road.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna go with Ms. Clemens, then Mr. Lazo, Counselor Lazo.
So, we looked at Powfield in eighty-seven or whatever and we moved into a house there in eighty-eight on Ellis and we lived there for seven years, which wasn't a long time, except that during that time, a lot of things happened. And also, we maintained friends on that road, so we watched the deterioration and the hole filling and the ditch and the rocks and everything for years. So back when we were there, dirt road, gravel road, developer selling us the property, what do we, yay, sounds good. Yeah, it's undeveloped road, oh, but the town, it's a town road, someday it'll get paved. Okay, whatever, what, you know, what do we know? We were young, kids and all that. what do we know, we were young kids and all that. So anyway, just to say though, um, the, the biggest problem that this town had again in accountability was in issuing occupancy permits, to the point when the developer didn't do what they said they were gonna do. Because back then, unfortunately, that developer did not put through with what he was supposed to do. Okay, move on. The best way you should've fixed that road all these years was the vetement process, which we tried to do. We were a signer on the vetement process, and I think we were off one signature at one time back then. And by now, everybody's, it would've been paid, you know, it wouldn't have mattered. Um, we were willing to pay, and I still think that's the way you go about things like this, like Hunters Ridge, was the vetement process, um, which we were told you couldn't do, and then we were told you could, so, again, previous director. So now you move forward, and you're at this point, but, so the rocks went in, the rocks went out, the water, all that good stuff. Ellis was a dirt road. If you can, if you can get it, it used to be maintained, once you know they made it graded or do a little something to it, fill a few holes with rocks, not, or gravel, I should say, not tar, and then suddenly, they started filling it with tar. So anyway, I, I keep hearing that nine counselors took a vote. You know what? Counselors vote on a lot of things. I was a counselor. Counselors vote on a lot of things, and sometimes they're wrong. Sometimes they're illegally wrong, just because you vote because you're an elected person, doesn't mean you know everything. Sometimes councils purposely vote, and they know things are wrong. And sometimes counselors sit up on council and don't even know their own bylaws, open meeting laws, or anything, and participate when they should. So, that being my point on counselors who vote nine, just 'cause you voted it, doesn't mean it's right, and doesn't mean you shouldn't fix what you voted on. So, I would suggest you listen a lot, and stop with the, we voted on it. Because what you're doing now, what this group is doing, including counselors, 'cause they're in this room, which is great, is accepting the fact, most of you, that sometimes there is room for wiggle and for, and for concern, and you should take that part seriously, no matter if you voted yes or not on something.
All right, thank you. Counselor Lazo?
I do move on, Ellis Road in nineteen eighty-eight. When I closed on my house, they handed me a legal document that said that, it was a court agreement that said that the, the residents that were there before eighty-eight took the town to court and said it was a town-accepted road, and the town said, no, it wasn't. They get all the way to the courtroom, and they're ready to go into the courtroom, and the legal advice to the town was, you're gonna lose, cut a deal with them. They cut a deal, the documents at DPW that says to maintain vegetation, maintain gravel base on that road, and do snow plowing. That was the agreement amongst the residents, there might've been three or four houses on the road at the time. Mr. Kadraki was one of the leaders, my neighbor, who's since passed now. I get a, uh, Jack Howley was the town manager, he turned around, he researched that road, 'cause there was an ongoing argument over it, the residents were constantly, I, 'cause we need to get mail, they wouldn't pick up the kids on the road. Well, he researched it, what happened was, the board of selectmen voted to abandon the road, but never abandoned it through the county commissioners. So the road was never abandoned, it's still a town-accepted road. Now, the DPW director that comes in is tired of paying for the gravel being washed out, because there was no drainage, there was just gravel base. DPW would show up with dump truck loads, and just keep new gravel every spring after the, the whole hill would wash out, you couldn't get a vehicle. That's our bad guys. So then, what the DPW director said, let's go to town, they went to the town council, they put the drainage in that's there now, that, and they cut the easements to go across the street. And then they put mixed it and rolled it, it was like, all of a sudden, the mailboxes came onto the road. The buses came onto the road because it resembled somewhat of a road now. It looked paved, and, and it didn't wash out the next year, so everybody was happy. Thirty-three years later, I'm sitting here, and I'm still debating whether it's a town-accepted road, and whether, what are we gonna do with it? It's the worst road in Southbridge, it was voted with road in Southbridge. So for me, you know, I'm there, yeah, I'm a resident, something has to be done with it, everybody over there, they had a cut on the tax rate.
Yeah, well, that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get something done here, that's all.
And unfortunately, you're, this town, not, is much like most other towns, they're all fighting the same thing. And everybody's kinda doing it the same, but a different fashion. My town that I live in has the same exact problem, they have late communities. Uh, some of the roads that are private are paved, uh, they're, none of the roads are maintained by the, the town. The only, the only maintenance that is done is, uh, they have what is called a limited winter maintenance policy that was adopted by the board of selectmen in two thousand and sixteen. So what that policy states is that the town public works department will plow and salt those private roads in a storm event after three inches of snow, which they're part of a regular plow route, the three inches of snow theory is out the window, it's a public safety thing. Uh, there are still some private roads in town that the residents pay to have private contractors plow, right? But I think there's two left. Uh, one of them, there is one individual lives at the end of the road, he's the guy that collects the money every single year. Some people pay, some people don't, some people just expect it, it is what it is. Unfortunately, this gentleman's in his nineties, and he doesn't have much longer to be able to provide this service, so the town will probably be plowing that one soon as well. They're all, they're, you know, my town has no maintenance, there's no pothole patches, no nothing. And I, I agree with that as a taxpayer, but I disagree with it as a public employee who is in charge of the facility and the fleet that maintains these roads, because much like most of the roads in Southbridge, my guys go out on the street with their snow plows. I haven't seen too many manholes that don't, that they're gonna break a snowplow at half, you know, just the same as the potholes on Ellis. But the problem is, is the town needs to, the one thing that we need to think about in this circumstance is, and I, I don't disagree with what's being offered, that if the road is a town road, that's fantastic. Are there any other roads that fall into the same circumstance?
I just know Ellis Road.
No, I know, and that's what we're talking about right now, but I, but precedence comes into play. And I'm not saying that, you know, to hold this up any further, my question is, is I know that there are a lot of private roads in this town. So, just putting it out there that, I understand that we're gonna, we're gonna pave this road, is what it, what the consensus is, and that's fine. But, there's more coming.
Okay. Counselor Dow, we're gonna finish it up with Counselor Dow.
We're not getting nowhere.
Okay. All right, you're gonna look into this, right?
Yes.
All right. You're gonna come back with a report in the next meeting?
I'm gonna do my dance.
Okay, we're gonna move on to agenda item number ten, discussion of condition on Dresser Hill Road and Gulfwood Road. Counselors, or Mr. Steve, or Mr. Lazo?
Uh, I had Dresser Hill Road, I asked them to put this on the agenda. Uh, from, from Mr. Remalad's house to Sid's auto body, the road is a mess. Jimmy Piapi, maybe a year, year and a half ago, did all the drainage on, he dug back all the drainage on the right side of the road going toward Shoppin', to alleviate the water coming over the road, so he opened up all the drainage. There are structured, there are pipes that go through the other road into that river that's over there. I requested some patching done, and Phil, when I guess, went over there, or somebody went and patched the road, but it's wintertime, and it's been popping up, it's a mess over there. I think it's dangerous, and especially when you come around that corner and you, you're hitting that road, some people even drive on the wrong side of the road to get away from the right side, and it's gonna cause an accident. And it's heavily travel, believe it or not, that road, park there at Sid's and watch how many vehicles go by. So, I mean, there is no sewer or water in that road, it's, it's basically a grinding pavement. But I don't know about the spot where, maybe Jimmy can answer this, uh, right before Sid's, there's a lot of water there still. Is that draining correctly?
Well, you know, part of what happened there was the solar farm.
Right, yeah.
You know, kinda screwed it up.
Yeah.
That road was probably reclaimed and paved like twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Um, the, the, originally, that road was rebuilt right after the fifty-five flood. There's subdrain in there, you know, subdrain has progressive failure, nobody redid the subdrain, so you're gonna, you're gonna have a heavy cut there by Sid's.
Yeah.
It's the same thing that's gonna happen to Ellis Road, the water's getting under the road, they ditched some, but not enough. The subdrain needs to be replaced, and also, when they were paving it, there was a big segregation problem with the paver, you can see that long, long split.
Yeah.
The paver wasn't set up right.
Yeah.
So, it, it needs, it needs a little more work there than just pulverizing, it needs, you know, some drainage.
That's what I thought, okay.
And, and we oughta dig some test holes, as, like we should everywhere else, and make sure there is gravel there.
Thank you. With that said, can we look into doing something there? I mean, it's actually a dangerous section of road, someone's gonna get killed there. If we could look into it, put it on, give it to the DPW director, have him do something with it?
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Did you hear that, Mr. Brenoy? Mr. Brenoy, did you hear what he asked? To look at Dresser Hill Road?
I looked at it this afternoon, but I'm definitely, now that I know a little bit more of the history on it, we'll look at that section in particular.
It goes all the way down to the, it's even, it's even further down by the Remalad property.
Out of order. That's my line.
Go on that pond, go on that pond.
Oh, yeah, it's a pond?
There's a pond where, Rep Paul's, uh, always go in for.
That's right.
It, the water bleeds out there.
Yeah, yeah, as far as here, yeah, you gotta check that out, thank you.
Okay, then finally, Gulfwood Road, and the reason I put that on here is because Gulfwood Road is pretty much in the same condition as Ellis Road, there's a lot of problems with that road. So that's another one that we did have on a list to repair, but we just didn't have the money for it. So that's what we're looking for, funds to repair that road as well.
So, I'm assuming that the patch that's there, the patch that goes from the highway to Tory Road is something to do with supply for the school?
Yeah.
Yes. And then, you know, obviously, that sunk, and the road is misshaped, and that.
The Tory Road.
Yep, it's the fire.
I was looking at the whole thing, like, I'm looking at, you know, we're looking at, obviously, from Tory Road up to Ellis, but I'm also looking at the, the, what's happening with the newest repair to the road when they did the work, the previous work.
Okay.
That's, they softened that ground, which, and it turns out a lot of meaning for some.
Yeah, it's, that's, I was, that's what I was looking at, so there's like, there's two crowns in the road now, one of them is inverted, and one is not, the wheel going up the road is now a river, so that, that whole patch is it's already started, but, no, obviously, yes, the, the part from Tory Road to Ellis Road is, is not in very good condition.
That road was reclaimed and paved around the same time as Dresser Hill Road too.
All right, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Shenier speak.
If you look back at your meetings, is there was originally, I believe, last year, the year before that, a million dollars appropriated for that road. And it came back to you guys that said you needed more money to do that road, which, Gulfwood Road, because of the work that needed to be done.
Yeah.
So council redirected that million dollars, and that's how you got North Street, Coombe Street, and Mechanic Street, you got more roads paved for that amount of money, instead of putting more money into the road and only getting one road done, if you look back. So there was a million dollars there, but council wisdom was to redirect it.
All right. Okay, I saw that you've got your work cut out for you, expect a report by the next meeting. All right, if there's nothing else, we're gonna adjourn this meeting, make room for the town government. Motion to adjourn by Steve.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Thank you.